For April 12th, 2022, this is a work session of the Pinehurst Village Council. If you have other conversations, please step to the lobby and otherwise, you're all welcome to stay. The first item under our work session agenda tonight is a discussion about a framework for the Neighborhood Advisory Committee. Jeff Sandborn, I'll turn that over to you, please.
All right, thanks, Sean. Maybe we get Kelly to bring up the map that shows potential neighborhood alignments. If you recall, the last time we talked about this topic, I suggested that the first step would be to talk about, to try to define a geographic framework that we can use for NAC representation, and so we put some effort into that. I'll apologize in advance, this is kind of a busy map and it can be kind of hard to interpret. But part of that's because there's just so much going on out there in the community. We've, you know, different developments are in different places. But what you see depicted on this map, outlined in blue, and then in some cases, there's little red ovals, is a representation of recognizable neighborhoods, more or less. The red ovals plus the Winston Pines development in the area directly east of the Lake Pinehurst Association boundary don't really neatly fit into other areas. So they're kind of called out as special cases, I guess, if you will. I added some blue boundaries that weren't specifically tied to recognizable neighborhoods in order to divide large unorganized areas into more manageable sizes. And I could call attention to five of those areas, probably maybe the most significant ones. That whole area north of the Lake Pinehurst Association in the broader area that we typically call the Lake Pinehurst Neighborhood, I divided into three potential sub-neighborhoods: West Lake Pinehurst, North Lake Pinehurst, and East Lake Pinehurst. In that case, doing so wasn't very problematic because there were geographic boundaries or places that made sense to draw those lines. In between West Lake Pinehurst and North Lake Pinehurst, there's a pond that sits right there. So you don't have neighbors that, you know, who would be, you know, one neighbor would be in one neighborhood and his next-door neighbor or her next-door neighbor would be in another neighborhood. And then the boundary between where I drew in between North Lake Pinehurst and East Lake Pinehurst runs the course of fairways on the golf course. And so, you know, at worst, you're looking at a situation where people are looking across the fairway at folks in a different neighborhood. And then the other place that I took a stab at was the Old Town West and Old Town East line. And I used a line that had been used in some previous work that we had done at the staff level about five years ago, maybe four or five years ago. I can't make any representation that that's the right way to, place to draw that line, but it was an honest effort to try to...
Jeff, is that a street that you drew? Or is that, that blue line a street running or not?
They are streets, yeah. It's not one street. You know, so if you trace that from the north, it's coming down Rattlesnake Trail, then coming around in front of Village Hall, down Magnolia.
I see.
And I think that may be Dogwood, and then back around, what is it, Azalea or whatever, coming back down to Route 2. So, I mean, that boundary could be moved left or right. You know, I don't know that there is a perfect solution. It's not as clean, I guess, the way I'd say it, it's not as clean as the way we, I potentially divvied up the Lake Pinehurst area. I'd call attention to that areas, the areas that are, lie immediately to the east of the Lake Pinehurst Association footprint there. You know, kind of basically on the other side of Diamond Head Drive there, they're not part of Lake Pinehurst Association, they don't neatly fit in other things, but this depiction would lump them in with East Lake Pinehurst. You know, they would have to fall somewhere for representation. But it looks like they're three distinct areas, but they're actually little pinchpoints there that...
Help me, what does the red circles mean in each spot?
They're places, they're little areas that don't necessarily, if I put them in a little blue square, it would have been hard to see.
Okay. So I guess, let's just focus for a minute on the one where it says, at the corner there is CCNC. You've got the arrow. CCNC is clearly designated. Then you've got a red circle around part of it.
Can you scroll down, Kelly? There's, that's the Pinehurst South cottages. That's the development that was approved about a year and a half, two years ago, to be annexed into the village. So that's under development, and it's one of the things I'll call attention to as we go forward, but...
Now, I know what you mean now, all right.
In some cases, we're recommending that smaller neighborhoods be combined. In some cases, this helps to resolve what to do with some of those areas that don't fit nicely otherwise. And so, maybe it's best now just to kind of go down through the list, and the first 10 neighborhoods on that list are pretty easy to identify. You know, they are neighborhoods that are currently, they have some structure, organization. What happened? There we go. Pinewild, number six, CCNC, number seven, Village Acres, Lake Pinehurst Association, Donald Ross, Pinehurst Trace, Doral Woods, Claring the Gardens. If you look at number six, there's one of those oddball situations. You have Spring Lake Hills condos up there in that same general area of number six. It doesn't fit anywhere else, so, you know, potentially, they could be lumped in with number six for representation. It's a very small community. I don't remember exactly how many units there are there, but I think it's less than 20. And then you can, there's a recommendation there for consideration of inclusion of the Royal Oak subdivision and the senior apartments in with Village Acres as well. They're on the other side of Murrixville Road there. Is that the right solution? I don't know. You know, it's not super clean, but they are, but Village Acres is the closest recognizable, identifiable neighborhood that you could potentially lump them in with. And then, the potential neighborhoods that I've identified, 11 through 15, are the ones that, with the exception of Monticello, are the ones that would result if, you know, when I divvied up Lake Pinehurst in the Old Town area. And then, I'm sorry, 11 through 16. And then when you get down to 17, 18, 19, and 20, those are some, I mean, there's some efforts to try to group things together that kind of makes sense geographically and result in neighborhoods that are kind of on equivalent scale to the other ones that are on this map. Like, you know, I called one Linden Roads, Linden Road West, and that would include Coswell, Winston Pines, the estate lots that are along Linden Road where the potential third fire station property is. Kelly lives there. And there's also another home on the other side of the street there that you might otherwise miss. And then potentially the La Farae development that was done and annexed into the village a couple of years ago. They all run, all exist kind of along that Linden Road corridor there. Again, it's not a perfect solution. You know, I bolded Coswell because it's, we have a current member on the, on the NAC who represents Coswell independently, as an independent neighborhood, you know...
Well, couldn't that person represent Linden Road West?
They certainly could, yeah. It's an option. If that's what, you know, if they would be willing to serve in that capacity, then yeah, I think it would work.
Hey Jeff, quick question. I'm seeing neighborhoods identified on here that I've never saw on NAC before, which, if that's the case, that's good to me. It seems good to me. It's a positive thing that we're identifying neighborhoods that have never been identified before and trying to bring them into the process. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, there are wide swaths of Pinehurst that have never really been represented on the NAC.
To me, this is a good, this is a step in the right direction.
Yes.
If we can get people to represent those neighborhoods, yeah.
Right. If we can, yeah.
You've got 21 neighborhoods identified. How many do we have now?
How many representatives?
No, I mean, how many neighborhoods did we have defined? So we're going from X to 21.
We don't really have a defined list of neighborhoods. We have NAC members that, in many cases, very clean. You know who, you know that Pinewild is a neighborhood and they have a representative?
Yes.
You know the same thing about CCNC and Village Acres and number six. And then we have a broad number of other folks that have, there's been this state of flux over time that they don't... Kelly, how many people are currently...
Eighteen.
I was gonna say it was 17 or 18 we have.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's, we're going from, so we're increasing...
Oh, yeah.
The number of neighborhoods theoretically.
Yeah.
Right.
One of the 20, though, that's just evolving because those are three places that are in our ETJ. They're not a part of the village yet, but if, see number 20, Pinehurst South, Windsway, Pinehurst South cottages, and our future development if it comes in, those are not, those are, this is an evolving neighborhood. There would be no representative right this minute because they're not in Pinehurst.
Well, if they are, I mean, my apologies, it's not Windsway Woods, it's...
Is that the one down on Linden Road?
It's Abington Square is what it is.
Abington Square, off 5, right off 5.
Yeah, when we were looking at this map, we were, we had our, we got crossed up on those neighborhoods, but that's Abington Square. That is in the village limits, it's an established, existing, small neighborhood, but this is another case in point where, you know, you got that and you have Pinehurst South cottages, which is under development now, and where else would you put them? And I thought maybe you lump them together now and then to the extent that there is other residential development consistent with, you know, the future ideas for Pinehurst South, and that would all be in that...
Yeah.
You know, how that all develops in the future is hard to tell, but...
Right. This makes as much sense as anything, I mean, with some of these new neighborhoods. And clearly, the idea, or one of the ideas of the whole reason to be looking at the NAC is to find ways to expand the coverage. We have a lot of parts of town that aren't covered well, and we have a challenge in helping them get covered well because there aren't natural organizations there, HOAs and whatnot. But that's part of the process, and Jeff's had some thoughts on that.
Jeff, the number 21 itself, group of condo developments, where is that? What is that one?
Yeah, so thank you for calling attention to that.
It's got question marks next to it.
So, this was Jeff Batten's suggestion, and I think it makes a lot of sense. He observed that, and what he was calling attention to was that string of condo developments that are along Highway 5.
Okay.
And currently in what's described as the East Lake Pinehurst neighborhood.
Oh, yeah.
And if you recognize that, they're all kind of organized, right? You know, I think several of them are under the same property management, so, but they have common interests. So maybe it makes sense to lump them all together, and there might be other candidates throughout the village as well. It might create a better way to deal with Spring Lake Hills condos up there that have depicted with number six. You could lump them then in there as well. You might take, I don't know, they're townhomes, but maybe the fairways townhomes on Morganton Road fits better with that. I don't know, I mean, we'd have to have some dialogue with people, but... There are other, you know, condos that people like-minded, would like types of situations, maybe, maybe in that case, you don't tie it specifically to geography, but you tie it to that type of use.
I think geography is the strongest link that people have when they think of their community. You can have a condo...
Pat, can you step up to that microphone a little bit? I think we all need to do that.
Yeah, I think geography is the strongest link citizens in the village have. They're Pinewild, they're Village Acres, they're neighborhoods. If, I think if we pick groups by housing type, we end up...
Yeah, this would be a one-off. I wouldn't suggest doing that everywhere, and maybe not even completely. There are some places where a little development fits right in. They're not condos, but if you look at Bretton Woods, I think that, you know, it probably fit right in with East Lake Pinehurst. And there's, I don't recall the name, there's that little development in within, actually exists, there's actually two of them, that are part of the Lake Pinehurst Association that are more multifamily-type developments. So, it's just a, it's a suggestion that, you know, maybe, you know, when you look at that geography, particularly the Highway 5 corridor, I mean, do those condos kind of more identify with themselves and/or do the people that live in the rest of East Lake Pinehurst consider those folks as being part of their neighborhood?
But isn't this just a good start? I mean, I don't know if we're gonna get it perfect, we'll never get it perfect, but right out of the blocks, it seems like a good start.
Yeah.
Yeah, enough of it is, you know, taken from and duplicate of what we already do, and that's good. That's the first, you know, dozen names or so, I guess.
Yeah.
A little bit more, maybe. So that's, that's good. That's part of the current structure, and this is a way to try to outreach to those areas we have not had in the past, and/or to begin to work with some larger areas that have had representation, but really only through a single person because there isn't any HOA or neighborhood organization, and to find ways to help them create a network. And Jeff's had some thoughts about how we might, you might do that with emailing lists and this sort of thing.
Yeah. There are a couple of other oddities that I want to call attention to, just so to make sure you were. First off, there's an error on here that I need to resolve, and that is, if you look immediately to the, on the north side of the North Lake Pinehurst boundaries, in between there and Old Town West, there's that little sliver between the railroad tracks that's not currently lumped in with anybody. That's where St. Andrews comes off from Linden Road, and I think those homes should be in the North Lake Pinehurst neighborhood, so I'd need to move that boundary up there.
Where are they now? Not on this map, but where...
They're left out of both neighborhoods right now.
They're left out, okay, okay.
He's gonna put it in North Lake Pinehurst.
Yeah, I see.
The other thing is that when, when I drew the boundaries of the Old Town East and West, I tried to keep, keep it all properties that are in the historic district. It didn't make sense to do that entirely, and I would, you know, the whole, kind of around the McDonald Road area on the east side of Highway 5, I got that in Old Town West, but it's not in the historic district. But it seemed like it made the most sense geographically. And then the other thing I'm still trying to wrestle with is that area that got left out that I was just talking about. There's a little, tiny little cul-de-sac road that comes off Linden Road there called Linden Place, and it's in the extreme western portion of that part that was left out. That may make more sense to lump that in with Old Town West because its access is off Linden Road, it's not, there's no direct access to it from the Lake Pinehurst neighborhoods. And the two roads that, the two homes on that cul-de-sac that are on Linden Road are in what I call Old Town West. So that, it might make more sense to take those three or four additional homes and lump them in, lump them in like we did for the McDonald Road area.
Into Old Town West, even though they open off Linden Road on the south side of Linden? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, the homes I'm talking about are currently not allocated anywhere.
Okay, okay.
But they're in that, in that area that I called attention to, and I guess what I'm saying is I would take that area that currently isn't allocated anywhere and...
The estate lots, am I looking at the right book?
I'm sorry, no. In between North Lake Pinehurst and Old Town West. We had that conversation about those ones that I left out.
Right, I saw those.
Yeah. The, like, four or five properties that are, that make up the extreme western edge of that are on Linden Place Road, which opens onto Linden Road. So, it's kind of a minor thing, but I think I would draw that boundary to include those as part of Old Town West and Linden Road, or whatever, however we want to call that.
Jeff, the property directly south of Village Acres, looks like a little triangle and it kind of, I guess that's, maybe that's number eight. Where, what is that below?
Is that the hospital?
That's the medical district, yeah.
Okay.
I think I know what you mean, right there.
Yeah.
Little triangle right there, okay.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to tell on this map. I, in many cases, I tried to exclude the big golf courses, in some cases, they are included, so, I apologize for the lack of, you know, of consistency there, but...
Jane, did you have a point here?
Yeah, I, I'm glad to see that we're taking a look at this and trying to include and pick up some of the, especially the smaller communities that may not have been included before, and at least give them a chance to be involved. Not, you know, it may not, but, but I think that's, that's a good idea. I similarly like to see us give some of the ETJ an opportunity to be involved. And there's Jackson Hamlet, which I think is, it's part of Pinehurst South, some of it, and it's heavily populated and, and I don't know if they're interested, but I think we should offer it. And then, and then there's the Western ETJ as well, and there may be other pockets of ETJ, but, but I do think...
There's some up on 15501 as well.
Yeah, and maybe that could be lumped in with, with one of the other neighborhoods that's up there, but, but I, I do think we should at least give it a whirl to have the ETJ...
Well, you're not, you're not... You're talking about the map itself, Jane. Just, just looking at the map itself, it's, it's covering some things that we wanted to achieve, that's what you mean. And with the ETJ being a question mark, I think, because we haven't included that to any degree here, you're suggesting we need to look more at that, is that right?
I'm, I'm suggesting that we make some of the different areas of the ETJ NAC neighborhoods as well, so that they could have a representative to come.
All right. Let me suggest something. That's an organizational and a policy question. What I'd like to do to kind of move this along is if we're generally happy with this map and we know we're gonna find some nuances on a few streets here and there and how they're tucked away, but I think generally with the, with the map, we're all happy and some of this will evolve a little bit more, especially as we talk to the current members of the NAC, they may recognize some affiliations here that we don't, we don't really know, and that will evolve. So, if we're dividing this discussion on the NAC as, as I'm, I'm thinking, we got a map, this is a better, this is a pretty good depiction of, I think, where we want to go geographically, but now we need to address other issues related to the overall policy, the other things we're trying to do, including ETJs and Jackson Hamlet and other policy issues. And maybe we could move on into those and realize that this is in pretty good shape, but it'll have some tweaking as it goes along.
I would make one suggestion that we put the map, and Jeff mentioned he's got a few little things he's got to do to it to just clear it up a little, but that we put it on the website and ask for comments. Because I, I think, you know, this is something that we're gonna, in essence, impose, is maybe a too strong a word, but we're placing upon the residents. They've been used to one map for, I don't know how long, probably long before I've been here, but it might be interesting to have other eyes see things that we missed.
You talked about putting it on the website, and I think eventually that would be good. I think we need a chance to, to at least show this to the NAC. Now, there's a meeting of the NAC coming up on Monday, and we're, our intention is not to go over all details because we haven't read all the details yet at the council level, but to give them a framework for this, and clearly, the map would be, would be part of that.
That's a better idea than mine.
I think we should do that, and then we'll carry this out, you know, to the rest of the population when it's necessary.
I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. That's a better idea than mine.
ETJ, I've stumbled over in the past few weeks, a really good memo you wrote about inclu, not including ETJ.
Yeah.
And is it hard for you to put your hands on that memo again? Rather than recreate the will, you wrote a really good memo, if you could...
Yeah, it was an email, some ideas about that subject, yeah.
If that's helpful to help us understand your rationale, it might be good to have you not have to do it again.
Yeah, okay, so let's, the ETJ is one of the issues of development and policy point of view I think we need to discuss. My initial view of that is, I kind of think there's a way to include them. On the other hand, well, not on the other hand, but in addition to that, the ETJ area is specifically already included in the planning board and the board of adjustment. There's a position that they have to have, so they are represented in the broader scheme of things within the responsible entities of Pinehurst government that they need input on, and that's the planning board.
Those are the only jurisdictions that we have over there.
Now, there, there are other aspects of why they should be included, and we've had some recommendations of some names there over time, including, I think, today, that they should be included. So, it's, it's an issue to wrestle with, and maybe we all have some opinions tonight on that particular item. I know you do, Jane. So, I'm, I'm, but let's discuss that. I, I think that there are reasons that should be included and maybe some reasons that are not, and I believe Lydia was touching on your memo of a couple of weeks ago, Jeff, on that subject. Would you care to give us some of your thoughts on that and then?
Well, I'm a little flat-footed, I'm trying to search my memory here, but...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, so, this is the Neighborhood Advisory Committee. I've commented in the past that the ETJ isn't a neighborhood, and as a matter of fact, you know, a lot of us are working very hard to prevent it from being a neighborhood. It's a rural area for the most part. There are some neighborhoods in the ETJ. Jackson Hamlet is the most prominent, and, you know, if there's a case to be made for inclusion, I think that's where it is. I've commented in the past that our jurisdiction over, over the ETJ is solely about planning and zoning, and as John pointed out, the ETJ is represented on our planning, zoning, and board of adjustments boards. I guess the other point I would make is that if you strip out Jackson Hamlet, there aren't a lot of residences, residents out there. So the same point about, you know, why, make up, we should have relatively equal representation and, you know, lumping neighborhoods together, you know, why would you, why would you carve out a, an NAC position for what probably is gonna be 20 or 30 residences? When it's a case where, I mean, most of the things that are village-related are not ETJ It just seems like an odd fit to me.
Thinking about my own comments and just trying to open the discussion on this, it does occur to me, as you, as you've mentioned, Jeff, you know, there are reasons we don't want it to be a neighborhood because we want it to be as it is. We want to help protect it and to make it rural. And so, from that point of view, there's every reason perhaps to include them in the Neighborhood Advisory Committee because it gives them a little more conversation with other things that are going on in the village of Pinehurst, some of which will affect them just like some affect other neighborhoods. And that's a, that's a very good way to share responsibility and certainly, and certainly have two-way communication, which is one of the things we're looking to have here. So, you know, with those reasons, there's every reason to do something with our ETJ to have them included with the Neighborhood Advisory Committee.
Question to help me understand this.
If you... This is about communications. I mean, primarily, the Neighborhood Advisory Committee is about two-way communications.
Is there a, other than the planning and zoning board, is there any other one of our advisory councils that people who live in the ETJ are members of? That the only one? Because I, if that's the only one, it makes it a...
I can't say with certainty off the top of my head... I can't say with certainty off the top of my head, none that I'm aware of, but they are, we, we, we are open to their involvement in other.
I think there have been members, residents of ETJ areas who have served on the beautification committee or maybe the bicycle ped committee, this sort of thing. So they have, they have been a part of that, if not the major, certainly not the major part of that, but they certainly have participated in my recollection.
I thought someone sent us all an email last week that said that, that on our website, we encourage people from the ETJ to apply for advisory councils. If that's the case, there's a little disconnect of, hey, come on, apply for any of our advisory councils, but.
I see.
No, we don't want you, you can't join the club, or whatever. So I just, we, I think we just make, make sure we, things are lined up correctly here. There's not mixed messages. So I just leave that out there.
I certainly don't want to keep anybody from representation on any of our committees that we have in the, in the village. The question goes through my head is what all is going to be discussed in the NAC that's going to pertain to the ETJ? There's also maybe a self-selection process that they don't want to be a part of it, because it's, doesn't pertain to a lot of the things we're doing. And so I don't know all the different things that happen on the NAC. I certainly have read some of the stuff that's occurring there. But if we wanted to make a member-at-large, if they wanted to fill it, then that's fine. If they don't, then they don't. I mean, I, I'm sort of like you on the fence of this. I just don't know how much the NAC is really going to be discussing things that pertain to the ETJ.
Well, good point. We provide fire protection, right? Or not. That fire protection would be a different map, I suppose, Jeff, Jeff Sanborn.
It's not, it's not a one-to-one relationship, yeah. We have a fire district. It's not, it's not governed by the ETJ.
It's not, not all of the ETJ territories would be in that. Some would, some would not.
That's right.
Police, same? No, not at all. That's the sheriff's department for police, isn't it, in the ETJ? Okay, okay. Jane, did you?
Well, there are so many planning issues that are in front of the village. And that is something that is, impacts the ETJ. And so I, I, when you look at the number of projects we have and, and consultants who are, who are working on all kinds of planning, from West Pinehurst Park to the focus areas and eventually, eventually, eventually Focus Area Five. And so I, I, I do think that it's, it's fair to have them there. There, there may be a lot of things that come before the NAC, Stormwater, that's not going to particularly be of direct interest to the ETJ. But, but there are going to be a number of things that are, and I just think it's, it's better to include them.
I guess the counterpoint is that, yes, it's all about planning and zoning. And everything, planning and zoning related, goes through two boards that are, have representative, have representation from the ETJ.
Are you, you're talking about the planning and zoning member?
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm, I really, I don't think that's, I don't, I don't think that's very tell.
Why?
Very telling, because then, then it's like saying that, you know, well, gee, everybody who's a resident within the village limits has, has four representatives, so, or four. I guess there's nine people on the, so they have a whole bunch, so maybe we don't need the NAC at all. I, I don't see how them having.
The NAC shouldn't be about planning and zoning-related things, because we have other methodologies to resolve planning and zoning things.
We're talking about a, a planning project, such as the small area plans. That's something that could have an impact on the ETJ. Pinehurst South on, on Jackson Hamlet, for example.
And ample public processes that invite participation.
I, I really don't understand why you want to exclude. I, I just, I just.
I just think it's.
I just don't get it.
I think it's odd.
And I think it's.
Jane, I hear you say "them." Who is "them"? I mean, I think one of the things in what you wrote to us before was, we've got ETJ in several places. How, who is "them"? How, how are them selected?
And how can they have, how can they, how could you even define collective interest? I don't.
I, I just, I don't know how it would, with, how many, how many different.
Their perspective on things are going to vary so much, depending on what they do for a living, whether they're farmers versus residents versus.
I just don't know who, you, you said "them." Let's give "them." I'm not sure who "them" is and how they are selected. And who they represent. And, you know, Jeff just said "public process." The things you mentioned are, they go through public process with ample opportunity to be heard, to hear what's going on.
I would say, Jeff, that, I would say that the, depending on the issue that the NAC deals with or the information, and again, it's about flow of information between.
Yeah.
Village and, and the neighborhood or the area. At any given time, there would be some of the topics that are discussed at NAC that are of interest to half of our members and, and some things that are, that are not. So just because the ETJ may only be interested in certain types of things, that, that isn't any different than, to some degree, than other, than neighborhoods generally.
I think that every topic that we pitch deliberately is about things that pertain to all residents.
Pertain to all residents, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, and some, some would be, but some would be more interested than others. For example, I mean, the SDR discussion. Pinewild and CCNC set their own rules. They're not, they don't, they don't really care what happens.
We're not really pitching anything on SDRs either. It just comes up in the conversation.
No, that's, but that's, but, yeah, it comes up in conversation, because other neighborhoods around the table at the NAC are affected by it and have their views, we know. So I'm just trying to think through where the touchpoints, if any, where the NAC is, is a, is a good relationship to have further with the ETJ. But I think, as Lydia's saying, how many ETJs do we have? And how would we, you know, I don't think we're going to have one representative for four different places, but we maybe could have one for all of them, something like that, if we went forward.
If, if we look at the overall proposed framework, and I'm, I'm going to suggest that we're probably going to, at least I would recommend, we drop the group of condos development, because I think that's a rather awkward thing. So we, we would have 20 members on the NAC. Now, 20 proposed NAC in the framework. If I thought we were going to get 20 people there and we would be busting at the seams, I, I guess I would probably say, oh, maybe we don't need an ETJ person. But I don't know what is going to be the participation rate. I don't know what, which neighborhoods, and I've heard people say before, you all have better recollection than us, than I do, that nobody from that neighborhood has showed up at the NAC for years, right? Okay. Only certain neighborhoods, where there are others that are always participating. So I guess I sort of lean, I'm leaning towards inclusion of additional voices or voice. And then it gets to the selection process. People who would represent these neighborhoods, some of them come out of the homeowners association, so it's a slam dunk. There's no work involved for us really to decide. But there are others where there aren't a homeowners association, and we need to.
We're going to have to recruit people.
We're going to have to recruit people, or people are going to come to us, and then we're going to have, we may have multiple, and then we have to make a decision. So maybe we see if there are actually people from the ETJ who apply, and we can decide about that. Just a thought, as I was, I was just trying to look at the, where we're headed on this. We get the neighborhoods, who, how we fill it out, how many applications we get, where do we go begging? So, anyway, that's my thoughts, I don't.
I, I don't see the harm in offering a position to the ETJ, portions of the ETJ. And they may not show up, which is fine, but I think that if we say, well, you can't come, it doesn't look very kind.
Couple of boards I've been on had members-at-large. Okay, so you'd have representation that occurred from a variety of different things, and then you'd establish two, three folks that are members-at-large. And you could probably establish something like that here, because you might have, okay, let's choose North Lake Pinehurst. Maybe there's three great people that want to be on there, and you're only going to take one. Well, somebody else may be a member-at-large, because they're going to be, have positive contributions for it. Just gives you some leeway to do that. And if you were to say, okay, the ETJ folks can apply for members-at-large position also, and you give them preference, because they don't have representation, and they really want to be on it, great. I'm not sure that we're, I don't want to exclude anybody on there. Again, I'm not sure how much is going to be discussed that's going to really pertain to the, to the ETJ on there. So you may not have a whole lot of people that are applying for it. So we may be talking about a problem that's not really a problem.
Or the member-at-large route, and some, some structure might work.
Yeah, and, and a variety of ways you can work that, okay? But with this, again, we're not launching the space shuttle here, okay? There's a variety of things that we can do here that gives the, gives the village council some slack on there to, to, to work with it and try to create what's best on there. So I think if you had created a couple of members-at-large positions for that, two to three on there, to, to be able to work within that, again, you identify some regular people, you could do it. That'd be my suggestion.
Part of what we're trying to do here is build two-way communications capability. A member-at-large isn't going to, really going to have that. That doesn't mean that they don't add value, but.
I understand. Just, just trying to find a way forward here.
What are you looking for, what do you want from us tonight?
What's that?
What is it that you're looking for us to do tonight? To say we like this, or?
If we can get some agreement on this, then we can start to move forward on the rest of the plan, but.
But I think the discussion about ETJ has been healthy, but let's move on from that, see how it evolves.
It could all be, it always could be something that could be added in the future, too.
Right.
I still like what I'm seeing here. I think it's going in the right direction.
I, I do think it's something we ought to polish up and send to the NAC for, for our discussion purposes, whenever the next meeting is. I think that will be good, will, might move the ball forward. Again, my only thing I'm not particularly fond of is the group of condo developments. Is Jeff batting around? No.
He's back here, yeah.
Oh, okay, he's hiding. So other than, other than that, I'm, I'm fine, and we can, maybe when we meet with the NAC, they'll have some interesting ways to tinker with the map that may or may not be improvement, and then we can move on from there. I do think we can then further discuss the process for getting people.
Right, and we'll get some reaction from the NAC after next Monday's meeting, when we'll at least talk about the map and get some good input on that. Now, are there other directional or policy issues reflecting on Jeff's memo of last meeting, let alone for this meeting, that you'd like us to talk about tonight?
I just kind of tried to map out a little bit of a way forward on this. You know, if we settle on the map, then we can start to analyze how the current membership aligns against that construct, identify neighborhoods that need representation, and identify neighborhoods that might have some redundant representation, and how to, how to come up with some methodology for resolving that redundancy, which may take some time. Develop an approach to phasing in term limits, if, if you all do agree with that approach going forward. Because we don't want to do it all at once, because we want to have some staggered approach to things, so we're not turning over membership all the time. Draft and adopt a policy document, advertise for candidates, interview candidates, pursue council appointment of new members, do some, go do some onboarding of those new members, and then develop, you know, work on that communications effort, particularly for the neighborhoods that don't have an existing distribution list or a way to communicate with.
Yeah, you, you mentioned that in the past, of some sort of email address. Isn't this what you're heading at right now? We're going to give the neighborhood a, or the NAC member a.
So this kind of a, if you could, you just envision oldtowneast@gmail.com. Something that, that is enduring. It's a list that we can build and transition from one representative to the next and. Yeah.
Now, on that, I think we'll hear maybe as early as next Monday, but certainly in May, when hopefully all the members of the neighborhood advisory committee have had the chance to see the map, review the points. I think there has been some concern, but what you just tried might lay that. And that is that there may be some neighborhoods, or certainly people in neighborhoods, who don't want their email addresses everywhere. And what you said may affect, may help that, but it's also how that, how those addresses coming back to from the neighborhood residents.
Yeah.
To the advisory committee member would, would work. So I think there might be some question on that, but maybe we've resolved that already.
I do think that, and this is part of onboarding, that we've got to, this is one of these problems I think we've got to fix, not only for our neighborhood advisory committee, but also for our other appointed boards and committees, is that people need to understand that as, as an appointed member on a village government body, their communications are subject to open, or public records law. And so we've got to make sure they understand that requirement, they have to maintain those communications, they, you know, they have to handle them properly. I don't anticipate anybody ever, will ever request it, but we need to make sure they're doing the right thing.
Well, anyway, there, there are issues like that that I think will, will come out or be, be raised as we move it along through the NAC. I'm sorry, Pat, did you have another point that you wanted to add?
I was going to, I, I thought we were starting to get toward the, the topic of, and we were, about the email addresses, which is good. But I, I've expressed this before, and I'm a strong believer that we need to list the members of all our advisory councils on our website. They're not now listed. And I think we should really also consider a brief bio, not on the neighborhood advisory committee one so much, but on the folks on our planning and zoning board and these other things. So citizens know who are these people that are on the advisory council, that are advising, advising the council on issues that may impact me as a citizen. Right now, if you go to the, the planning and zoning board, for instance, we list the chairman, and then you, if you, there's a line that says, click for current board members. Well, if you click it, you've got to prove you're not a robot, and then you've got to send an email. So you can, if you want to get who these people are. That's not transparency. If you're signing up for an advisory council, you should, your name should be public information. So I, I feel strongly about that, about all our advisory councils. On the neighborhood advisory representatives, we do list them, which is a step in, I think, the right direction. But we, obviously, we're headed down the path of an email for communication.
I think Kelly and I, Kelly and I found that they actually are listed all some, someplace, but it's not where you'd expect to find them.
So I, I, obviously, as we get to these items, some places will just list the name of the chairman, and then we have a link, but you've got to prove you're not a robot. There's other places where you can't even, they don't even ask you if you're a robot. They just don't have the names. Okay.
I think.
I think with regard to HBC and BOA, we should be careful about that because of the nature of the, the work they have to do, but I agree wholeheartedly with everybody else.
With respect to the NAC and the sort of timeframe, in my mind, I think we go to this next Monday's meeting, we'll review the map, and I'm sure, I think there'll be some questions about the memo that people have read from the two last meetings we've had, so they'll try to answer those questions. But as you and I were talking earlier today, actually, there are a lot of members of the NAC who don't know we're talking about this yet, and with changes, what it makes, we want to get everybody educated and up to date, which means that probably in May, at that meeting, and subject to further review at the council, we might be able to move forward a little bit further with the NAC and moving to a resolution of what, what we're going to do and what the council wants to do. And all that kind of takes me into June, when hopefully we could have all this set up for effect in the fall, because in the summer, the NAC takes off July and August, if they don't meet. So it would give us some time to set things up or get things rolling for September. That's sort of my timeframe idea on that. With that said, then shall we put this aside and, and have the discussion on next Monday with the NAC? An overview and move on with them? the NAC, an overview, and move on with them?
I guess what you're saying is this is not blessed, and we've got to have to come back again at the next meeting to get this approved.
I think so. Let's, that would be, yes, yes. Because I think we'd have at least some feedback from the NAC members, which would be, say, Monday, to this. And they would have a chance to have read this, because it's up on Nova's agenda. Maybe we should send this and the map out, Jeff.
What else is on that?
And post that to the NAC members.
What else is on the Nova's agenda relating to this? I don't...
I just kind of read down through it, actually.
I didn't, I didn't. I remember it from two weeks ago, but I want to see what it says. That's it, just those nine items. Okay.
I'd like a little more feedback from the NAC, but this is certainly the framework.
Okay.
Including the map. All right. Shall we move on then to our other discussion tonight on short-term rentals? Item number three. As you're getting settled, during the course of the public comments, I reminded myself about this question that keeps coming up about what are, what does our PDO say, and what does it really mean with respect to permitted uses? And I think we really need to talk about that tonight and sort of clear the air as to what the PDO says, but how it may be overridden by state statute, right? Because it is confusing to people, and it was referenced a couple times tonight, certainly has been in the past. So that would be one clarification.
Let me, maybe I can kind of head that one off. I think there's two issues been brought up. One is the provision in our PDO that says that if it's not expressly prohibited or allowed, then it is expressly prohibited, or words to that effect. Soon after that, our current PDO was adopted, we learned from the courts that that is not legal. The courts have found that that type of a framework for permitted uses is not appropriate. And in fact, if something is going to be prohibited, it has to be expressly prohibited. So while our PDO says that, it's something that we cannot enforce. And we've known that for at least the last six or seven years, because every time it's come up since I've been here, we've had the same answer. So there's that piece. The other is about interpretation of the language in our PDO, and there are folks that have, feel very passionately and strongly that the language says that, because this is a commercial use, right? So, and that's what they're hanging their hat on, saying it's not allowed in a residential neighborhood. So again, we get some help from the courts on this one. The courts have made it very clear that in every case where the language of our ordinances are subject to interpretation, we are obligated to interpret our ordinances in the light that is most favorable to the applicant, or the, you know, the property owner who is affected. And I guess I would observe that since this ordinance was adopted in 2014, we haven't interpreted it to say that short-term rentals are permitted.
Are what?
Are permitted.
Well, we don't, we don't make a difference between short-term rental or long-term rental or extended stay.
That's, I mean, so there's a detailed answer, but if you cut to the chase, the courts say that if it's subject to interpretation, we must interpret our ordinance in the light that's the most favorable to the applicant. We've demonstrated for seven years that there's another interpretation than the one that some of our residents are bringing forth right now.
Define applicant there. What is the applicant? Is it, no one applies for a short-term rental?
I said applicant is a shorthand. Interpret that to mean the person whose property rights are in question.
Okay, that's what you meant by applicant. I didn't know what you meant by applicant. Well, if that's the case, I do think there is more interest in this than I thought there would be on this whole PDO thing. I think if you all recall, a month or six weeks ago, I sat here and said, I believe these short-term rentals are legitimate business, but that they should have some sensible regulations around them. And I said, I know of nobody on this council who is thinking of trying to prohibit them. Nobody said otherwise up here. And there was one lady in the audience who said, I said, I don't know any resident who said they want to prohibit them. One lady raised her hand, and I identified herself. Since that time, I've gotten emails, like many of you, on this PDO thing, and there are more people than I ever thought who want to prohibit them. That's not my policy approach. But I do think we need some sort of formal reply to these folks that are saying this, or we appear to not be responsive. If they don't like the answer, and we're on good ground, it sounds like we are, well, that's the way the rules work. But I do think we need to have some reply, because this has picked up more steam than I would have thought.
Basically, that's why I asked the question, to get the definition. We need to make it clear, and why don't we just amend the PDO? I mean, but we need the explanation out there. That's the reason, I think, we've all been getting this confusion from people, and we need to get an explanation out there on the one hand, and when do we, can we text amendment?
And I guess I should be careful, just to be clear, I mean, I'm not advocating for this, but what I just said doesn't mean that we can't prohibit it.
Well, that's true.
But, you know, we would have to change our PDO to do that, so...
That's part of that discussion going on out there.
Yeah.
And it, so, that's fine. But I do think we owe the residents who keep asking about this, something clear, whether they like it or not, but we do owe them.
But is that something that can be, you know, produced in the next week or two?
What's that?
This clarification of what the PDO says, but why it's not correct, or why it isn't, can't be interpreted as some of those have been asking us to interpret it.
I think we just said it in a public meeting.
Sorry?
I think we just said it in a public meeting.
But to John's point, we continue to get emails, so what if we had like three, two, three, four sentences that we could then just cut and paste into an email in response?
There was one of the requests, and Mr. Coats said, he was here this evening, and he read the email he sent to...
From Pickman.
Was, he had two specific questions, and if we can develop, or may our attorney develops a brief reply to each, I think that would go a long way to, one, it certainly would answer the question of responsiveness of the council. And of course, people can still have the right to disagree, but at least we can, yeah, it's not going to stop, because they, like you said a moment ago, we could prohibit it. But we don't. Okay.
There's two quick points to that. There's one, our PDO puts no timeframe on rentals. So you can rent your, there's no prohibition on, or establishment of how long a dwelling unit has to be rented. There's nothing in the definitions. Then you would look at our actual definition of what a dwelling, single family is. This is what's allowed in our residential districts, dwelling, single family. It's a freestanding building designed for and/or, that's an important point, and/or occupied for living purposes. So designed for and/or occupied for living purposes. Every one of those STRs is designed for living purposes. And then, when you start to look at, start to look even more at our definition, it contemplates and almost expressly permits rental, because it says, these residents may be individually owned as residences, or residences owned by rental or management companies, owned by rental or management companies. Doesn't say short-term rental, doesn't say extended stay, doesn't say anything else. And then now, then it said also includes factory-built modular housing units. And this is a, this is a definition that goes probably, I think, back to at least 2014, it may go back to 1995. So this is an old definition, and it just says, single-family dwelling. It doesn't say a family has to inhabit it. We used to have family definition in the PDO. I think rightfully, we pulled that out, because it's one of the toughest things to enforce, is defining and enforcing a family. But this right now is why, you know, every single one of those STRs that you're hearing is a freestanding building designed for and/or occupied for living purposes. That and/or is pretty critical.
Is that in the PDO?
That's the PDO.
That's the definition, not a PDO, yeah.
That's correct. So what we're talking about, and what Jeff, we've talked about, the use is not expressly prohibited, and we're void from, and we're void from enforcing that, because it's too vague. It opens us up to making arbitrary and capricious decisions. We have to define the land use. And that's what we've been talking about, defining the land use, what an STR is. That's why all these other communities have been doing it. They've been defining STRs because they've run into the same problems we are. If you want to regulate, you have to define, in light of the context that you can't just expressly prohibit every use. Well, you can prohibit it, you could, Jeff said it. We could decide prohibit it in districts, in areas, things like that. So that is still allowed under, you know, the Schroeder, the Wilmington case. The court said that on the last page, the restriction of whole-house lodging units to certain zoning districts. You can, apparently, the court had ruled that that is one of the things that you can do. Now, what I did, what I just handed out to you, was I took, I took some of those regulatory responses that we worked on a couple weeks ago, and I put them into a matrix form, and then I started, I started to lay out, this is Darren, I started laying out some pros and cons, and I had to update it based on some of the things that we know now about the Wilmington case, and some that we still might have to consider. So I don't know what you want to talk about tonight, or how you want to, how you want to go through that. That's 18 pages of material, so I don't know how much you want to go through tonight, but, because I just finished it just before we got here. So I haven't had a chance to update it and give it to you, give it to you ahead of the meeting, but it lays out all those regulatory responses, whether it be a PDO update, whether it be a municipal code update, or whether it be a policy or educational type thing. And then I just started to lay things out.
Darren, can I...
Give us a nutshell overview of the Wilmington case, what it means.
There is no nutshell overview. No, I, let me, I have spent, you guys, I have so immersed myself in the past few days, and I went through the Wilmington case and pulled out things that I thought were key statements, and I've got three pages. This is a complicated case, and I, frankly, I'm surprised we haven't asked Mike Newman or somebody to come in and educate us on this case. And I think it would be, it would put you in a bad position and put us in a bad position if we asked Darren to give us an overview of this case, when it's, this is a 26-page opinion, and it's complicated. There's so much meat in here. And I say that, you know, having worked for a judge and going through cases and pulling out things, statements that are so impactful. So to me, you've got the case, it's complicated, we need a legal opinion on it, but because it was unanimous, Wilmington's going to have to file a petition for discretionary review. I guess, you know, if you, if you had a dissenting opinion, then it would automatically go up on appeal, but because it was unanimous, Wilmington would have to file a petition for discretionary review. So they've got like 30 days to decide that, and then the Supreme Court takes forever and a day to decide whether they're going to hear it. So this, as complicated as this case is, it still could go up to the Supreme Court, and it is an impactful case.
My impression is, just from what I'm hearing in the television reports and things like that are covering this, is that it's pretty straightforward. We can't do permits or registrations or anything like that, but we can pursue other avenues. And...
John, it could go up on appeal, and then it could be sent back to Wilmington. That's my point. This is not, yeah, it's an opinion, but it could be reversed, it could go back to, this, to me, it's irresponsible to make any decisions based on the holdings in this case, when this case could be appealed.
Well, it may be appealed, and it may take three or four or five years to have that happen.
And it's currently the law of the land.
As you said, the Supreme Court could take as long as it wants.
Well, that's, they can, but it could be imagined.
You made a point. You made a point. And I'm just, I'm just saying, I don't want to wait for the Supreme Court.
Well, let me, but let me...
Let's do something.
The Supreme Court can take as long as it wants, and it doesn't have to hear the case.
But then another thing, too, and this is more important than what I just said about that case, you know, we all got this at the last minute in the last meeting. And so I took what Darren gave us, I went back, and I watched the outline, I watched the video, I annotated this, and then finally it hit me, and a lot of people said it tonight, and actually, somebody said in an email to us, this is a solution, I'm not, I don't think we have defined the problem. We had, don't roll your eyes at me. We had one resident who wrote to us, and he said, he said, "There isn't a clear and mutual understanding of what is the problem trying to be solved. Said more simply, what are we trying to do here?" And I think there are three steps. Jane, you're not buying this into this, I can tell. First, you've got to describe the nature of the problem. And, you know, so then I went through this exercise, I read all of the emails, and I started listing everything people said were problems. And some of these we can fix, some we can't. But sometimes, not only have to describe the nature of them, you've got to, we've got to address the severity of the problems. We hear some stuff tonight, and you say, okay, this happens once. Is that a severe problem? But then the third most important thing is what, what resources is it going to take to resolve these problems? Resources in terms of writing, writing the ordinances if that's what we decided to do? What's it going to take in staff time to implement? What's it going to take in staff time to get compliance? And so I think we have gotten ahead of ourselves in trying to fix a problem we haven't defined. And, you know...
I don't agree with that, I'm sorry. We're behind the, we're not, we're not ahead of the curve, we're behind the curve. And I think the short-term rental community, the people who spoke tonight in support of STRs, are looking for some resolution, just as those who are complaining about it and realizing problems. So I understand, you know, maybe this is a complicated case, although I'm hearing from others that it's, you know, fairly straightforward, and we now know the law, and we should proceed. So I, to wait and even worry about the courts reviewing it and all that sort of thing, I just don't see us being able to.
John, how do you...
We have to come up with some resolution here. We have to solve the problems of the whole community on this. We have the ability to do that. I haven't looked at it yet, but it looks to me like Darren has, you know, laid out another set of graphs here, or whatever, matrix, that pretty much leads us to what we can do and can't do, and we need to spend some time doing that.
I like to see that, I listen closely to all the comments tonight from the folks, very closely. And there's a few different things going on. There's the red herring that some organized group has spread out there that we're about to ban. That was a word used in a video. We're going to ban and prohibit short-term rentals, of which there has been no, as I said earlier, absolutely no sentiment to do that here.
I agree with you on that.
So that's, so that adds to the distortion, okay? Secondly, there were more than one of folks who have managed or owned short-term rentals who said they were okay with some regulation. They didn't want draconian or egregious type of regulation. And I don't, and I also don't want draconian or egregious type of regulation. I want some reasonable regulations over what is an apparent problem that has festered for years, if you listen to residents. It's a, it was, started as nothing, and there were four short-term rentals, then there were 40 short-term rentals, there were hardly any complaints, then all of a sudden, we're now at about 400 of these. And we get the stories. They're anecdotal in a lot of cases, okay? But I think we, we need to get ahead of this now, because we have been behind it as a council and as a community. I think the Wilmington decision told us flashing red light on a couple of things there. One was permitting, and there was another thing, and the lottery. I don't know what the lottery is.
Well, yeah, let me jump in here. I do think it is pretty clear. I think that what, here's how I would summarize that case. The courts found that registration is not legal. The courts found that any regulation that Wilmington did, or attempted to do, that was inextricably linked to registration was not legal. A prominent example that they called attention to was the lottery. They struck it down, not because it was a lottery... They struck it down, not because it was a lottery, but because it was a lottery on unregistered properties. It was linked to unregistered properties. The court said that short-term rentals can be regulated.
And they, and.
The court said that short-term rentals can be prohibited in districts. What's not clear from that finding is whether the court would find that a permit would be treated the same way as a registration. They seem to waffle there, but the red flag is definitely there.
Right.
That's a danger area.
Yeah, those are the two areas. But the other things that were parking, insurance, fire inspections, all those things, the court said, "Go ahead." That's what I read.
Yeah.
Well, there's a parking, if you, they talked about two different kinds of parking. If it's a parking thing, we have to submit a map, and the city attorney, and they said, "Forget about that." But you know, from the very start, I said, "We want quality neighborhoods." So what is it that's happening in our neighborhoods that keeps them from being quality neighborhoods? And Jeff, Samborn, you said it the best the first time. You talked about essentially, a row of houses, some short-term rentals, some full-time residents. You want them all to be the same, you want them to look the same, you want them to behave the same. You don't want the short-term rentals to stand out for some reason. You didn't say that part of it. But, you know, what are the things that we can do to protect our neighborhoods? It's the parking on the street, it's the, but you know, skipping back to what Wilmington said, you know, how do you, if you say, "Okay, short-term rentals, you've got to do, you've got to post the non-emergency number, you've got to," there's a list of things that they said you can do. How do we know, and Darren, I asked you this yesterday, how do we know if a short-term rental has complied with these if we can't require registration?
Well, it's, I wouldn't say. I wouldn't say registration, I would say, our thinking was along lines of, if we required the permit, the permit was what we would determine, we would, like we review any permit coming through our office, we review it for compliance with the development code. If we can't require the permit, it's very hard for us to determine or enforce any code that we would pass. It would take somebody that's potentially using that unit themselves to complain to the village, and then we'd have to come out and respond to it. So it's a very difficult standard without a permit for us to enforce many, many aspects of the things that we had been considering. So, and the other thing to deal with as well, is if we pass some of these regulations, there's the immediate creation of non-conformities. So a lot of these might have non-conforming conditions, so without having some type of initiating permit, how do we establish, you know, if you're a non-conformity, and you're allowed to do what all non-conforming uses are allowed to do, or you're a new, or you're a new STR? We don't, without the permit, it makes it very difficult for us to regulate.
That's on the regulation part. Now, if we were to make adjustments in our zoning regulations, that's a little different.
I think that the.
That's where the non-conformities come into those.
The statute prohibits cities from requiring any owner or manager of rental property obtain any permit or permission from the city to lease or rent. Permit or permission. So you can't require them to get a permit or permission, so.
That's only, no, that's under chapters 11 or 12. That's not for zoning, zoning is chapter seven. We can require a permit or permission. The question is, you know, it's a practical matter, how is that different from registration? But, but the court does say that it's okay to regulate short-term rentals through zoning. So my thought, I just put it out there, is to follow the lead of Southern Pines, and to say that in certain zoning districts, short-term rentals will no longer be allowed, but that there will be an amortization period of however long, maybe two years or through the US Open. Just let me finish my thought.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Through the US Open, or something like that, during which temporary period, anybody, don't have to register, can use their house as a short-term rental, after which, nobody can in those districts. Now, my thought about it is that single-family residential districts would be ones where they would be not permitted, but condos and multifamily and mixed-use districts, fine. I think people expect to see short-term rentals there. But it's not just the nuisance matters that are the problem. It is, so many people have come in and said that having a business operating on their street busts up the neighborhood, and it reduces the neighborhood character. And that's a problem. So if we were to do, to take that approach, and combine it with beefing up some of our nuisance ordinances that would apply to everybody, then I think we would get out to the end of our amortization period, and we'd know more. But in the meantime, we have established something. And trying to regulate how many people are living in a short-term rental, you know, some of these details of the operation of the business is very complicated to try to enforce whether or not it's allowed, you know, technically allowed or not allowed. I mean, that's one issue, but just the practical, so to say, let's take some areas that really are meant to be, single-family residential, non-business, and then we have to define, what do you mean, "short-term rental"? And there, I think we're talking about a whole-house rental, and somebody wants to rent out a room in their house and they're living there, I don't think that's the same problem at all. And a short period of time, you know, 30 days and less, or something. I don't think that somebody renting their house for a period of several months is the same kind of turnover issue. People are living there for a long enough time that they're invested in the community a little more. So that I put out there to give us a way to deal with this, to start dealing with this. I don't believe it would run afoul of the decision that we have, what do I know, but because it doesn't require registration. And there would be the grace period. And then we can also, and I think this has been the case in the past, and might be good to do again, or continue to do, is to have exceptions for the US Open and maybe other major tournaments or events in the village, where there's a specific time period that anybody can rent their house. And again, you don't have to register as long as you're keeping to those time periods. So that may be a practical approach.
Does your matrix lead us to any of those?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But let me.
And on the matrix.
Is that a yes or a no?
It leads, well, that's an option that's laid out.
Yes or no?
Yes, there's an option identified in there. You can't hear me?
No, we can hear you. I think we can hear you. Yeah, yeah. So, would it, well, Darren has prepared this matrix. I've given it a quick look. This is one of your matrices where you want to have us check off what we like, right?
Mm-hmm. And really, I should have given you more time, I just finished it up, so.
I understand.
You haven't had enough time to absorb it, or discuss each of the options. Really what this is leading to is all those policy objectives that we talked about, and we sat around here and tried to, and developed, all the policy responses that are in there were meant to try and get to that route. So I identified issues like, you could prohibit them in all districts, you could prohibit them in some districts, you could create an overlay. Those are all laid out. But in order for us to start crafting, or drafting, and things like that, we need to get you some consensus with what direction that you want to go with these various options. And there's a lot of options in there. And I will tell you, without having a permit requirement, I still, and I think it's dubious that we can require a permit for this, just based on, I watched the argument at the Court of Appeals, and, I did, and, and, well, and what they discussed, I saw Wilmington start to make the same case that we are trying to make, that we wanted to use chapter seven, chapter seven, which is the zoning powers, to require the permit. And they discussed that specifically with the court. So I think the court was asked, well, I'm not even going to, I'm not even going to discuss any part of that, but I did watch it, and I think having the permit requirement, I don't think that is still on the table based on Wilmington's decision. I'm not the attorney, though, so I'm going to refrain from that. If that is the case, it creates a real cause, a pause for us, for being able to enforce a lot of these requirements that you're going to see here in, with the options laid out.
One of the commenters tonight made an interesting, I don't know if it's accurate or not, but it was that just the fact that we are talking about having some reasonable regulations or parameters around STRs is causing something to go on out there with investors and in the marketplace. It's more of this red herring idea that somehow people all over the country are watching what we might require some, something reasonable around the residential community. I don't believe it. It's right up there with the idea that we might prohibit them all. But there were quite a few short-term rental managers or owners who I think want to work with us on reasonable regulations. And I think that's the route we should take. I think, Darren, I glanced at it, okay, but I like the way you've broken it out, and I certainly will be giving you some feedback. And I do think we ought to consider some of the things that Jane mentioned, and we ought to take a look at, you know, it's more than just regulations, it's the municipal code, it's our zoning, and maybe there's one sort of larger solution to address this.
That's true. I agree that there's a lot, that's when you talk about affecting the market. Markets don't like the unknown. They don't, you know, you're not going to drop a bunch of money if you don't know what's going to happen. But I thought we identified the problem, and then we came up with objectives for this. And then we're going through that. And I'd like some time to digest what's going on. I glanced at it, I'd like some time to digest it before going through there. But there's a couple of things I do think is appropriate here that we can think about. One, property rights, it's been talked about. Property rights, looking up its possession, control, exclusion, driving income, and then disposition of the property. Those property rights are not absolute. We, as a town, have a right to limit that. You're not going to put a McDonald's in the middle of Old Town, okay? We have a right to zone, that kind of stuff. And then other mechanisms. Other part of this, though, is that rentals have been going on since probably the first time a town was created, okay, where people rent their properties out. We haven't defined the short-term rental versus long-term rental here, but you're talking about running a business. A long-term rental is a business, too. I rented some properties, I had to declare taxes, okay? If I'm renting a room out, that's a business. If I'm renting, you know, a boarding house, that is a business. And so these are all factors on there that we have to consider. One of the things that I found interesting, I think I've got one person of the entire folks that have ever talked, I wish I remember the name, I think it's Kennedy, Brian Kennedy, is actually from Pinehurst, was born here, okay?
Wait, what'd you say?
Brian Kennedy, was one of the, actually, it was a statement read by his wife.
He had to leave, but his wife spoke first tonight, yeah.
Other than that, every other person I know of moved into Pinehurst. All right, I'm originally from Ashboro, okay, I moved here. When I moved in, there were short-term rentals going on. Granted, I moved into Pinehurst, or Pinewild, but short-term rentals were in there, that's part of, when you moved in, you kind of bought into that. One of the things that you didn't buy into, though, for the vast majority of people talked about, was the rapid increase in the amount of short-term rentals in our town. Okay? So our village didn't buy into that part. And if the short-term rental market, because I understand it's a market, okay, if they were managing themselves, we wouldn't be having this problem.
They were what, Jeff?
If they would manage themselves, if they, as a society, got together, and they came together, and they managed, "Okay, we're going to do certain rentals, we're going to make sure we have," like a pretty professional organization, a guild, okay? Say, "This is what we expect from you to be able to do." And if they had some sort of management process in that, where their peer pressure, whatever the case may be, saying, "We are certified for-term rental people," or whatever, if the bad actors, so to speak, were not bad actors, we probably wouldn't be dealing with this. Because there's lots of folks that have come and talked to us, and they live by short-term rentals, and they don't have a problem. We talked about the wife of a chaplain, army chaplain, who's running a couple of houses, okay? And takes a great interest in it. Samantha Cole talked about owning a couple of vacation rentals and one long-term rental that's on there. So there's a lot that's going on there that people are doing it correctly. And they've got it in a variety of different places. And it's so tangled right now, when you talk about zoning and creating different spots where they can be or can't be, that horse out of the barn, okay? I don't see how we can effectively do that without creating the favored zone versus the non-favored zone, and just creating massive amounts of problems here. I think what we're looking at here is, again, defining the problem. A massive increase, maybe, I'll change my adjective, we have had a large increase in the amount of short-term rentals. We've had a democratization on who can be there, the internet, Airbnb, the RBO, all that kind of stuff. So you have a variety of different types of folks that are coming in and using them. And that's causing some consternation with some of our residents, okay? So when we look at all that, and then we also have a court ruling that I do think helps us, because it gives certain areas, say, "You can't go here," but other areas, say, "You can go here." So what I want to do is look at what Darren's put together here, and focus on where we can go, and say, "Okay, what we're going to do is we're going to try to address the real issues here," which is the bad actors. How do we maintain those folks? And I'm listening from both sides. When Jeff Hines comes up and talks about it, saying there's certain things that we can do, I concur with that. All right? When you've got Phil Sonja coming back and talking about the academic aspects and looking at some, I'd love to see those academic articles he's referencing.
I want.
Okay? Because there's certain things that we may be able to help out. And the most important thing, I think, on there is, I'm trying to remember, it was maybe LaRose, I'm not sure who exactly provided the comment on there, but to establish a group of residents who both support short-term rentals and don't support short-term rentals, and can get together and say, "Give us some options that you think will work in being able to manage the problems here," and see what they come up with. Because that's the one thing we haven't done, and I strongly encourage this council to charter an ad hoc committee of those residents, okay, just, I don't know, maybe 10, okay, 12? Get them together, and just say, "What do you come up with, and give us some ideas on here before we make some decisions on it."
I agree with everything you said, except the last thing. I think we're the mediator.
I'm not saying we're not the mediator.
No, we're the elected officials. We shouldn't be contracting out this decision. And that's the way I see it. We have heard, and I, not only the people who come here and testify and speak out, but I'm probably just the same as you, phone calls, emails, stopped in the street, that suggestion of a mediator? We don't need, I'm not.
I didn't say a mediator on there. What I just said on there was getting an ad hoc group of people who agree and don't agree, and see if they come up with some ideas for us. We are the ones who are going to make the decision on there. That's just more input. How many emails have you read about this?
Oh, dozens.
I don't know, I've read a few hundred?
Hundreds.
Yeah, okay? And I've seen a bunch of people that are for it, and seen a bunch of people that are against it. And typically, what I'm seeing is the people who are against it are like, "I'm against all short-term rentals." And the people who are for it is, "I want no regulations whatsoever." What I'd like to see is something combined in there, and that's where you get these two groups together, saying, "How do we do that?"
I think that's what the Darrens offered us. Right up there. I think you just described the position we've, I think we were sort of all at. Nobody hears, wants to prohibit them all, okay?
Okay.
I mean, I think that's a consensus we've reached.
I concur with that. Okay, I concur that we're in that consensus. What I don't think we have done is actually gotten those folks together, say, "Do you have any other ideas you can possibly come up with?" And if they come up with nothing new, they come up with nothing new.
They have other ideas? I don't know what stopped them from bringing them up so far.
We did talk about the idea of getting some people together.
Correct.
When we started this process. I thought at the time that. When we started this process. I thought at the time that we would, but we needed to put some thoughts together and get some direction to it so we could talk to people and get them to react to that, just like you said. But I think it's incumbent on us, and I think we've had good progress with Darren here, to develop a way forward and then get some dialogue with the parties and have them react to that, rather than just start from afresh on it. I think we've come where we need to be with Darren's work, and we need to take advantage of that to move forward.
I look forward to reading what Darren has and digesting.
Yeah, we need to digest that.
I want to, I agree with you, and I want to think back when you and I were at this school government, an assistant planner from Raleigh said, they did exactly what you said. They said, we brought people in from both sides. He said, the first time, they were like cats and dogs at each other, but they finally started coming together, agreeing on what the problem was and coming up with some solutions. And I put this in here because both a Realtor has suggested it to me, Marcus LaRose said it, and Jim Fisher, in an email even said, when he wrote to the guy who did the video, he said, I bet that the two of us got together and talked, we could find some middle ground. I don't know Jim's words. So I started putting this all together, what happened in Raleigh, when you and I went to that class, what Jim Fisher said, what a Realtor said, what Marcus LaRose said. These people are living it. And I think if you got the rational people, the Jim Fishers, and I don't know, the rational people on each side, and have them talk and try to find something that they could live with, that they would present to us, I think it's a workable solution. And like you said, I don't think, it's something we haven't tried. And I think, I don't know, I think that's a viable solution.
And we're not giving them the decision-making power here. What we're doing is come up with ideas there. One other point that I forgot to mention here, when I talked about not buying into it by purchasing a home in Pinewild, you have to ask yourself a question. In Pinewild's homeowners association, why did they ban short-term rentals?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and the reason is, is because it affects the lifestyle of the neighborhood, okay? And so in that itself, I think you have enough evidence there that says, okay, maybe some regulations there to get the bad players to conform is appropriate.
I agree. I bet that is why Pinewild did it.
On this issue of how to engage the short-term rental community, pro and con, and again, the fact, the reason I felt that we should get a framework that we agreed to and then get them involved is that I wouldn't want to have these folks come together and without the benefit of the research that the staff has done and the knowledge of what's possible and what's not, they might waste some time effectively by chasing down ideas that cannot happen, that we've already eliminated. So it just seemed to me that if we could continue to work on this for another meeting or so, and then get some feedback from the community, once we have a framework for it, that would be the better way, rather than have them kind of running along doing things we've already tried to do.
If I might make a recommendation, if you all are interested in doing some sort of a focus group like that, I think I would recommend that you offer this as their start point. I don't...
Yeah. That's on my point, yeah.
Most legally appropriate options are listed here.
Right.
But have them discuss the options and what makes sense to them. And then if there's something else that they can think of that we haven't listed, they could provide that feedback as well, but...
This is the framework, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I support that. What I'm interested in is not necessarily the timing of exactly when it occurs, and John, your comments are hitting home, okay? I don't want to cause strife, all right? To be able to take something and work with it, come up with some new ideas, and be able to put that forward, I think that's reasonable. I also think the process is important, just like we're listening to people talk, really, we're listening as to what they're saying. The process is important to go through this. And we'll see what we can come up with. Certainly, I've got some impressions from all the different things I've heard, but I'll tell you, I started this whole program with an open mind, and I've listened and I've read all the emails and everything else, and I will tell you that my opinion has changed some from day one, okay? Just to hear what people have to say. Anyway, taking this and going from there and working with it, I think is fine. I'd like some time to digest this before we talk about it.
Is this on our website?
Not yet.
But it will be?
Yeah.
So we can direct, we can direct any...
This is really, this is the same options that Darren presented last time, but some pros and cons language added, that's it. And the opportunity to vote on it.
Yeah, and I've had some minor adds, just cleaned up some of the wording, and I'm probably sure some of it still needs some wording. The other thing that's important to consider is there's been really no analysis done of the court case yet. So we've not seen anything coming out of the school of government yet. We still, so some of the things that even I'm talking about may be still subject to some fluctuation based on some of the, because I...
This hasn't been filtered through Wilmington?
This, some of it has been filtered, like the permit requirements, and, you know, I'm rethinking, potentially rethink, wow, I have the permit in all zoning districts via special use permit. And so the Wilmington decision appears to preempt that. I think that's the case, but I just, I still need to work through some of those, some of the Wilmington kinks yet, so. But this, I think, is a really, I think this is a good framework that I've laid out here. And you're right, I put down some pros and cons, but there could be more. There could be things that I'm missing as an option. But I think it's a pretty good framework for discussion, if that's where we want to go. Because you can see, I've done it with each of the issues, municipal code, policy, all that kind of stuff. So it's all laid out in this document. And then you start to, here's one objective, number two, short-term rentals do not adversely impact property values, PDO amendment. This is where we start to get in occupancy limits. So by bedroom, it's an objective standard. How do I enforce it? Especially, how do I enforce it if I can't require a permit? Things like that, we're still, we still need to weed through some of those issues.
Is the zoning issues at all raised addressed in here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. The zoning, as to which part of the zoning? There's a lot of zoning in here.
What's possible?
What is possible for us to do?
I think so, yeah. I think we've done a pretty good job of laying that out, and as with all my products, they're subject to further refinement.
I just like to clarify, you said something, Jeff said that designate favored and non-favored zones. For example, we've got two business zones, office professional, neighborhood commercial.
I don't, I don't...
That's what zoning does. It limits uses in certain zones.
I don't think I heard, I mean, you can do it. I think there's no doubt, even with the Wilmington case, if you establish it as a land use, you can control where that land use is located. So zoning, yes, we legally can, we can do that.
Right. We need to fill out this form. It's our homework, right?
Well, it depends on which route you want to go. Do you want to go to the, do you want to go a focus route?
Again, I think we need to fill out this form to create a skeleton to prevent, present to ourselves, but also to a potential focus group if that idea continues to be a good one, and I think it is.
If we all give you our feedback, our Xs, in all seriousness, well, you will have sort of a framework.
Yes.
Of the things that there's agreement on, and maybe the things that there's really not agreement on, okay?
Sure.
And then we can go to the next step. Does that sound where you're headed?
Yes.
I will send you all these digitally, so don't, I mean, just say it out.
I prefer this. I can carry this around and...
You can do that, too, if you're going to get it digitally, because that's the way I want it back.
Okay, that's fine.
One more thing. All right, you said this has not been filtered through Wilmington.
Lydia, could you repeat that?
This has not been filtered through Wilmington.
What do you say, filtered through Wilmington?
Through the Wilmington holdings. Does this reflect the holdings of the Wilmington case? I want to make sure that any implication, anything that the case as written right now, if it impacts this, that we, it's reflected in here.
I've tried. I've done it. I've tried. Again, I haven't shared this with Mike yet because...
Let's assume that it has, and if you find something that isn't right, you'll let us know.
I mean, I think...
Last thing, have you taught the League of Municipalities? Okay, I think that's probably a wise...
I don't think they've said anything. I haven't heard anything from the school of government or the league yet. I wouldn't be surprised if it comes out tomorrow or next week, but sometime soon. I'm not aware that, you know, they, I'm sure they'll say something. Wouldn't you guess? I'm sure, yeah. I think they'll have to.
They would have their finger on the pulse. If anybody does, they would.
I think we should be on the watch for that, but I don't think that we should stop working.
Right. I agree. We've got to keep at it. I think that the total public expects that.
So just, we've heard a couple of different options here. I think what I just heard was, you all will provide your input on this to Darren. We'll bring that back to you at the next meeting to review how it all plays out. We'll see what that looks like, and we might convene some sort of a focus group after that effort. Is that what we're talking about?
That would be the timeframe I would see now, yes. I don't think it's any faster than that, but it's not slower than that either. With the focus group being an end result, if that continues to look like what we need to do, and I think it will be, I think that's a helpful point. But on the other hand, I don't think the focus group needs to have its own life and go on for a couple of months. I think that's, they come, look what we've come up with.
Yeah.
Here's, you agree, you don't agree, what can we do to get around that, and we move on.
I think, Jeff, you were suggesting doing the focus group first. Is this okay with you?
I have no problem with all of that. My intent was to make sure we have a focus group. The timing of it is not critical for me on there. I think the idea that John brought up, of having a form, a structure that you brought up, is a better idea than doing it early. So I totally support what's going on.
And we can encourage people who write to us and call us to go look at this and provide us comments, too. I mean, maybe some, maybe we'll get some surprising results from someone who say, you know, I read that, it's not a bad idea, or...
Is it too late?
They actually set it up for public input on Engage Planners.
Um...
Make that effort.
Oh, I hadn't thought about it. How would that, describe how that would work on Engage Planners?
Basically break all these out as things that people can vote on.
I think, Kelly, can we put this in Novus? Can we stitch this in there?
I'd like to see us make some progress on this ourselves before we hang it out there.
I can put it somewhere up on the website, too.
It should be on Novus if it was given to us tonight, right?
No.
No, it wasn't there tonight because it was finished.
Out of the press.
But, so we wouldn't put it on, I mean, the last one got on Novus at 4:08 for our 4:30 meeting. This came in late, but shouldn't this go on Novus because we discussed it tonight? It was a document that was in our meeting.
Yeah, it could be there.
Oh, yeah, I'm not saying right now, but I'm just, I was hearing it wasn't going to go on Novus at all, because it's a document discussed, okay.
I think that's, let's move along in good steps, not overreach, not underreach. Come up with some framework here.
You're welcome.
And engage the rest of the citizens. Okay, Darren, thanks again for what looks to be good work.
Thank you.
Appreciate your, there will be more.
There will be more.
Thank you. That concludes the primary agenda items of the work session. Are there any other work session items that anyone wants to bring up? Or any future agenda items? Jane, did you have a point? Okay. Yeah, I think we have a couple of other agenda items we might want to get on. If you want to mention them now, Pat, or...
Well, I had a request that I would find it helpful if there, and maybe this exists and I just haven't found it, if there's a skeletal idea of the agenda for the next six meetings.
How many weeks?
Next six meetings that we're going to have. I mean, there must be some standards. I know how you plug in the budget, I know how you plug in other things, and there are, I just need it for my own planning purposes.
Yeah.
And you guys know it, staff knows what comes on regularly.
You're thinking like I was five years ago, five or six years ago.
I'm behind the curve, for our phrase.
I've never, I think there's, there's truth that there's a regular rhythm to a lot of topics.
That's what I'm looking for.
And we should be able to do that. I've not been able to produce that result to date.
If you can make an attempt, I would find it helpful.
Jeff and I discussed that, and it's well-taken. It's an issue that hasn't had the attention because of other things, but we'll go on from there. Do better.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, good. So no other business or suggested agenda items for the next regular meeting or work session? You can always supply them by email. So that would bring us to the end of the work session. Is there a motion to close the work session and enter into a closed meeting?
I move to recess the work session and enter a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-31811A5, to establish or to instruct the public body's staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease.
That's a motion by Lydia Bosch. Is there a second?
Second.
Miss Ella, is there, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. We will now go into a work session with a couple-minute break as we reset the room. Thank you.